I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to tonight's goal meeting. I know that some members of the public will want to jump in and participate and some might want to just speak at public input one or perhaps at the end after they've watched the whole process and speak at public input two. So I did put those on the agenda. Mrs. Graves has been planning out tables. Do you want people to sit at their tables now?
Well, we can go ahead and do public input.
Okay. So...
Does Abby have the stamp?
Public.
No. So, is there anybody that would like to speak at public input one?
I don't know what it entails.
Well, we recently changed rules. So, for public input one, we will have a three-minute time limit and you can speak on agenda items or non-agenda items. But now it's a chance for you to address the Board of Education.
So, I think I would like to do that because I'm not sure what's happening later. So in case I miss an opportunity, this way I know that I've...
So, I'll just ask you to state your name for the video camera and keep in mind that you'll be videotaped. And then just some general guidelines for public input. We prefer that you don't speak about individuals, just keep your comments generic and kind. And whoever wants to start, you can go.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, public input two is different from one in the...
No, it's just at the end of the meeting in case you had some thoughts during the meeting and then you wanted to have another opportunity to speak. But the rules are the same for one and two. Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. There's a podium right there. Now we get to catch you on camera.
I'm Nada Barry and I'm not 100% sure, but I think my comment comes under the wellness program that the school is working on. And what it is, is I'm extremely concerned about the after-school program and how it's developed. It's something that we've had for many years and it certainly needs revamping. But I do want to see not only that it's programmed differently, but that there also is a space for the child or children who really just want to veg out, listen to music, maybe chat or play with games that aren't strictly structured, that there's some sort of space for those children included in the after-school program. Though I realize space-wise and supervision-wise could be a problem, but also I'm not sure what the library is used for after-school and whether that could be incorporated in any way into an after-school program. For flowers.
Thank you. Next, go ahead.
A lot of shoes for the name.
My name is Minerva Perez and I am a former parent of a child in the Pearson District and a homeowner in Sag Harbor and also the executive director of Ola, East of Long Island. And I am here to focus a bit on Latino parent outreach. You know, in general, I'm sure this could be, this applies to the parent outreach, which is not always the easy thing. And I can attest to that as a former parent. I mean, I'm a parent still, but as a former parent of the school district.
Are your child graduated or is he disowned though?
She's 20. She's 20. Not disowned yet.
This is important. I've been trying to get rid of my daughter for 16 years. She keeps going off the dip.
So, in terms of involvement, you know, we know it's a challenge, but there is another level of challenge when it comes to Latino parents, but not just any Latino parent, generally it's a newer Latino parent to the community or to the country. And, and kind of taking into account sort of the different models that might not always fit every parent or every culture, knowing that there are many Latino cultures where a parent is asked very specifically to not involve themselves in what happens in education. That could be a minister of education says, "This is what you do, this is when you do it, this is when you come, drop your kid off, you leave, you come back, you pick them up." There's not a lot of give and take. I think what is going to be wonderful to do, and I know there's some stuff that you do already, but I would love to offer, you know, in terms of free stuff, and this is not, nothing that I talk about for the most part has to do with spending more money. So engaging with community organizations such as Ola, doesn't have to be Ola, but Ola is one. We are the only Latino-focused nonprofit based on the East End, but engaging on dialogues and ways to, and strategies that work for different, different districts, because this district is different than East Hampton, different than Southhold, some of the work that we've done across the way. But what, what are some strategies that we can look at to incorporate and integrate Latino parents into the framework of the school? Because we know with parents involved, the success level just skyrockets the more that parents can be involved, and we know that, and that's what we're aiming for. So what are some ways that we can do that and, and not have them be reduced to, well, we, you know, we hire one person and that's their title? We need to also look at some of the metrics that go along with that. What are we looking at to see that we're achieving some level of success or how is it, how is it moving? You know, what are, what are some things that we're learning that work really well here, but they're struggling over and over again with? You know, what, because that's a lot of what I've been doing as well, is getting to talk with different districts and sharing what's working and what's not working, different transportation needs, different access to libraries that might exist here but not other places. But ultimately with the goal of having Latino parents engaged in ways that are going to work for something that might be more, more beneficial for that family structure. So it could be at different times of the evening, it could be smaller groups of people. It doesn't have to just be, we expect that we say, "Well, this room is open, everyone can attend." I'm looking around this room and, and saying that if I really wanted to bring Latino parents in and I wanted them here, this dialogue, there are going to be different things that I do, different ways that I outreach to make sure that those with full facility of the language, of English language, can be here and those that are kind of a little tricky on it could be here and those that don't speak at all could still be here and not necessarily cost or spend any additional money. That if we can work together and network together, there are ways that we can do that. But beyond the big group setting, which can kind of be scary for some people that don't want to get up and have simultaneous translation happen because they feel weird about it or, you know, dealing with one by one, reaching out through class parent to class parent, how are we connecting up with these parents that we know are supporting their, their children or their caregivers that are supporting their children? Each of the teachers are going to understand the dynamics around their classes and kind of start being able to pinpoint, "Well, this person, that person, maybe, maybe we do that in really small clutches, little coffee clutches, three people here, four people here." You know, we're working with the library, we're working with different venues that we have and not just having everyone show up in one place at one time. I would be thrilled to offer all whatever information I'm gaining and learning every day to sit down and work with Sag Harbor School District. I love Sag Harbor, I approve every single budget when it comes my way. So I would say that I look forward to working with you in the near future and I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just something I brought. Where, there's a group of us who are forming a diversity and inclusion committee.
Where are you?
I was just going to say my name. So I wanted to talk about that. My name is Ken Dorph, D-O-R-P-H, and I wanted to introduce our newly formed diversity and inclusion committee. Several members are actually here and will be coming tomorrow. We're at least 10 people and we're growing. People hear about it and they want to be involved. A group of us, driven by many concerns, including divisions revealed in our society during the recent presidential elections, decided to work together to increase conscious attention to issues of diversity and inclusion in Sag Harbor schools and also the broader East End. We're working all over the East End. We're about 10 and we're growing. This is important to us all, but let me explain why it's important to me. First of all, probably most of you know I'm from the city, I'm from a mixed religious background. I grew up in a, in a mixed-race neighborhood, that's why I can dance. Most of my professional career has been in people of color, Latin America, Middle East. I don't work with white people. I mean, except that the 10% of the world that lives in North America and Europe, I don't have much experience here. I'm mainly working in Middle East, Africa, and Latin America. So I have a very weird perspective and I grant that. But even so, I, I, I feel strongly, I love Sag Harbor very much and I'm very grateful that our lives brought us here, thanks to Stuart's work. But I'm also exceedingly conscious, more than most, of the risks of provincialism. And I see the U.S. as provincial, you know, then I come to places like Sag Harbor, it's, I love it, but there's a lot of provincial, provincialism. And not only for minorities of whatever kind, but also to everyone who lives here. I have seen the effects of tribal fears, explicit and implicit. My earliest years were among Holocaust survivors in Brooklyn. That's where I grew up, in a Jewish neighborhood first. As a gay man, I saw how fear and ignorance made the AIDS epidemic a calamity that didn't have to be. In today's fearful political climate, I see candidates claim that Mexican immigrants have higher crime rates, when the opposite is true. Our deep ignorance and racism against Muslims and Arabs have cost us trillions in disastrous military expenses. And I could talk for hours on that issue, but I won't. Just in the past four months, I have been in Algeria, Niger, Pakistan, and Turkey, four Muslim-majority countries that are as different from each other as Uganda and Uruguay. And I only wish that you could know the wonder and beauty of these countries. I see the effects of this provincialism on my own family. As you know, we, we took a leap of faith and I have two children who are of African descent. And this is just one issue. It's a, it's a big issue for me because of my family. When Darius was in fifth grade, I was watching him play, and Darius is dark-skinned African-American for those who don't know him, play with some buddies in the playground. They were all white because he, there were no other black kids in fifth grade. And a white woman that I didn't know was also watching and suddenly said, concerned, "Who's that black boy?" I said, "Oh, he's my son." And she said, "Oh, I didn't know who he was." Now, I know she didn't know who the white boys were either, but, but I knew what was going on. Being polite, it's a small town, I didn't say anything. But now I'd like to thank that woman because she made me see something that I had been feeling and I have felt all through Darius's time in Sag Harbor, that there, there is a subtle, and Leila actually said this a few weeks ago, that Darius was always punished more than white boys for the same thing. And I'm not claiming this is bad people or overt racism, I think it's implicit bias and I think it's real. After Tom Rice was killed, there was a lot of evidence came out on American Psychological Association that black kids are perceived as three to five years older than white kids. They're also perceived as more guilty. This is real, it's part of who we are as a nation. Of course, there's a legacy of slavery and racism. If you haven't seen the film Thirteenth, I urge you to see so. Put it on your list, I think it's important to the school board. I, I feel so strongly that racism and slavery is what makes us different from UK, Canada, and Australia, who are much less violent, much more into the, the, the common we all than we are. And also workers are not split up. But that's a, that's a longer story. But I think you should see this film, you should really think about how racism has changed us, including on Long Island. It amazes me, Long Island, I grew up in the city, Long Island was the place where people went to, to, to get away, you know, from, from the diversity of the city. And again, we can, we should study the history there. But what strikes me is that people don't talk about it. People just don't talk about it. It's not taught in our history, it's not there. Now, we've done great things here in Sag Harbor, multicultural night, bringing Spanish to the elementary school, the Ivy Program, UN Club, but we need to do far more. Instead of ad hoc programs driven mainly by parental pressure, we need direction and commitment from the top. If we're going to produce citizens who can thrive in this diverse world, including healing our own divisions, we must raise children who value and, and know the beauty of our diversity and the challenges we face. I urge the school board to make an explicit commitment to diversity and inclusion as a key district goal and to oversee the implementation of the process that support the goal. As the committee, we are ready to help you do that and we would like to talk to you today and tomorrow in ways that we can help practically. The last thing, if I have time, I have an example of the statement. Can I read it? From another school? Okay. This is a statement from another school of, of diversity and inclusion. "As a community of learners, Sag Harbor School District is committed to creating a welcoming and supportive environment that accepts and honors all people. We respect individual differences, including but not limited to ethnicity, gender, national origin, race, religion, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status. We seek to foster community that appreciates the benefits and responsibilities of living in a diverse world. We believe that a deep understanding and valuing of differences is necessary to our school's overall mission and that community-wide participation in programs that advance the goals of diversity and inclusion is the key to our commitment." I propose that you accept this committee and also accept the work that we can help do for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Daly. I'm a Sag Harbor, actually North Haven resident. I worked in Sag Harbor and I serve on the Southampton Town Anti-Bias Task Force as vice chairman. And I've been meeting along with the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and the, the Anti-Bias Task Force of the town of Southampton was established in 1995 by resolution of the town board as an advisory committee to the town. Its mission is to help facilitate dialogue among diverse individual and cultural groups and to further equal opportunities for all. Fair play and social justice for everyone in our community is of the utmost importance. The ABTF works with leaders from the educational, business, not-for-profit, and faith sectors to develop and implement ways to prevent and combat prejudice, racism, and discrimination. The ABTF seeks ways of bringing people together to learn about the true richness of our community and the benefits of working and living together on a foundation of respect and goodwill. And this Diversity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee that has been meeting is all about that. And I support the work that they're doing and hope that you will be open to listening to some of the ideas that the committee is coming up with. We at the Anti-Bias Task Force have relationships with the East Hampton ABTF, Southhold ABTF. We travel around to each other's events and we are hoping to see what you may have an opportunity to do as, as kind of a pilot program that we can bring to other communities through the Anti-Bias Task Forces. And being this is, you know, our hometown, we'd love to see it start and grow here so that we can share it with, with our other neighboring towns and schools. Thank you.
Michael, how do you spell your last name?
D-A-L-Y.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Cohen. I am a mom of an elementary school child and I'm very grateful to be here. Thank you. I've been working with Ken and other members, other parents and community members on the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. We each have sort of areas that we're addressing and talking about and I've written a brief statement regarding faculty diversity. As any new parent, the past few years with young children have been humbling and life-changing. As a white mother to two brown children, however, I have also come to understand or at least have started to understand my own white privilege. I grew up in a mostly white community in Indiana and we never talked about race in my home. We didn't need to. I speak almost daily with my children about issues related to race and the color of their skin. They have decided that I'm not really white, but more like French toast. These conversations with my eldest daughter, who is now eight, have been revealing to me, the comments made in school during school hours are honest and certainly not malicious. But as a mother, they are heartbreaking. On one occasion, she was told she can't play Santa because Santa is white. On another, she came home from school asking me if she had to go on the other side of the wall because she looks the same as the Mexican boy in her clocks. She was in second grade. Anya attended the Bridgehampton School District Summer Camp when she was five years old. After her first day of camp, I picked her up, bundled her into the car, and asked her about her day. Her response, "Mama, the teachers look just like me." After meeting Mrs. Reynoso for the first time last year, Anya came home from school and told me, "Oh, mama, she looks just like me." Kids notice. We might not, but they do and for good reason. Research suggests that black and Latino, Latino children with teachers that look like them perform better. In addition, by increasing faculty diversity, all children benefit from improved critical thinking, problem-solving, and social awareness. Racial, cultural, socioeconomic, disability, diversity at all organizational levels can lead to improved decision-making and increased ability to build relationships with parents and result in improved business outcomes. Finally, I will close with a quote from Secretary of Education John B. King Jr., when he was Secretary of Education. "It is important for students of color to have role models who look like them and share common experiences. It is just as important for all students to see teachers of color in leadership roles in their classrooms and communities. We must work together to prepare, hire, support, and retain a more diverse teacher workforce." I am not an educator, but I would love the opportunity to work with the Board of Education as part of this Diversity and Inclusion Task Force to assist you in this process. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Creedon. I am the Director of the John Travine Memorial Library. I think that any of you who know me know how much I hate speaking and... But I am here tonight because I really believe in what my colleagues have been speaking of. I wanted to say I'm also here as the parent of two adult children who went through the Sag Harbor schools. And Jeff and Matt, thank you so much for what you did for my family. My boys are out in the world and are successful, at least in part, because of the efforts of this school district. In my role as Director of the Library, I would now like the opportunity to give back to all of you for what you've given me, both in terms of your support of my children and your support of the library, and offer the full weight of the institutional support for the policymaking you'll be doing tonight and throughout the year. You can use my space, I can make you coffee, I can do research for you, I can put together all sorts of references, and I do a killer bibliography. So, if you need, and in need of either my personal support or my institutional support, we're here for you. Thank you.
I'm a little nervous after all that, I have to admit. But as my, my treasurer said, just think of them, they're all just a bunch of mommies and daddies.
Please state your name for the camera.
I'm Aura Winark. I'm the President of the PTSA here at Pearson, for those of you who don't know. I'm also the mother of an incoming 10th grader. So, as part of, I wrote something as well, so I'm going to sort of try to read and, and speak at the same time. So, as part of your goals initiative this year, excuse me, PTSA would like you to invite, like to invite you to look at two intertwined topics that are regularly brought to our attention and have been for quite a little while now, over a year, I would say. They're brought to us by parents, teachers, and students alike. And the two topics are fundraising and student government. PTSA would like to recommend that as part of your goals agenda for this coming school year, that the Board of Education do two things. Number one is review a outdated fundraising policy. In fact, there may be two. There's one that's a sort of a mysterious one out there. They were last updated in 2005. We request that that policy be updated to reflect current NICED regulations, the soon, the very important soon-to-be implemented wellness policy, and include language on reasons and guidelines for such activities, as in, what are they fundraising for? Number two, that, that an assessment be completed on the current student government mission, educational goals, and operations here at Pearson Middle School and High School. Unfortunately, I can't speak on the elementary school at this point, this is strictly to Pearson. And that training be provided for both staff and students on best practices in an effort to support high-quality educational experience for students. We think it is important to outline clear guidelines for both students and staff on the purpose of class and student council, activities/fundraises, and when money is raised for what it will be spent. We recommend, of course, that these be done ASAP for this coming school year, so that any necessary changes can be implemented, so that they will align with the upcoming wellness policy and new NICED regulations. Our ultimate goal in advocating for this review is to enhance and improve extracurricular activities, enrichment opportunities, and learning experiences to ensure we're serving our kids the best we can. PTSA would also like to offer to help to make these revisions and we have recommendations, you can be sure, to, to the fundraising policy and to any student government. We also are suggesting an outside training service be employed to raise the standards of our student government so that our students can fully benefit from these very valuable educational opportunities. We are also willing to investigate these services and possibly share, share the cost. We're willing to possibly contribute to the cost of, of any of those training services. Just a few examples of, of why we are concerned without getting into too much detail. Some, I, there are, there are some fundraising in the middle school, but when students enter high school, they start fundraising in ninth grade. And it's not really clear what they're fundraising for. Some people say it's for prom, some people say it's for field trips, some people say it's a little bit for both. And if it is for prom, what's the budget? What's the ceiling? What's the minimum? What are the goals? These are, there's some, there's some vagueness there that needs to be cleared up. How many fundraisers? What sort of fundraisers? Are all the fundraisers in-house? Are we doing community service fundraisers? Are we doing service for whoever outside of the, out of the school? Another point, often large sums of money have been left in class accounts and yet still families are paying for prom and graduation costs out of pocket. This is not good. Student government has no stated goals or set curriculum. Many kids say merely it's, it's merely a population contest and a title and that they have no real power. We believe these are really great learning experiences and, and in many areas and believe that, and that we should raise the bar for our kids on both of these items and we're running down.
Anybody else for public input one? Okay, all right. We'll turn the time over to your Mrs. Graves. Thank you very much. Super good.
If you look above, it's, pick a card, not just any card. If you are participating in our goal-setting tonight, you, if you're a Board of Education, you would have had a green card that have a number on it and each of the tables have a number, please join that table. And no, you can't be swapping cards at this point. I'll be kind to you. I will know administrators have purple cards and would they join the table? So I have table one, I have table two, three, and four. If you're a community member and you have a yellow card and would like to participate, I would have given you a card or I could have handed you a card. Did you get a card? Oh, my goodness.
We were here at quarter of 11:00. I'm like, "Goodness."
You know, she, she had to work five days a week, which is not loving. For Sundays, Friday and Sunday, I have to say, like, she, she thought she was talking about it. But she's taken out. She's only going to work three, four days, three days a week as a worker. She's last, maybe she's two days a week. But it's so funny because she's had two, three, four days a week, "That's what I'm going to be doing." Isn't it nice?
Have fun. Thank you for having me.
One is part of the marriage.
Yeah. That's a cool, I mean, I definitely...
It's funny because she's not a real boss. She comes there and calls, I don't know why I would put her down. And if she stays late, sometimes an hour late, so...
Which one? I think so. Yeah. Yeah. She's looking hard. She actually has two tears. She loves sports. She's crazy. She's got a lot of feedback that's very positive. So it's good. It's good for her.
And as we know, the principal has been applying. Four, three, two, one, and it's the elementary principal, it's still talking. He's really, he's awake. The first thing I'm going to ask you, my name is Katie Graves, I'm the superintendent here, but I'm also facilitating the evening, and you were doing the one thing I wanted you to do. Oh, my goodness. Would you please, I'm going to put you on the clock for three minutes, would you go around to your table and introduce yourselves to each other? Thank you. And I'm going to put you on the clock to do the nautical, your table.
We can still introduce ourselves, just in case you forgot a name and you embarrassed to...
And I need to call you back when you don't know why. So I'm stepping in. I have two guests. One hour into 10.
Ken Dorph, Karen Teter.
The word carry and arrow together.
Is that how it's spelled?
Felt clearer with the emotions.
Oh, like, carry arrow.
I think this one's actually easier.
You're going to be karaoke, carry arrow.
I know, don't worry. Mine was a little bit better.
But every time I pronounce your previous last name, Sam, you always correct whatever I say.
My first name is Mary, my name is Frank.
Carry arrow.
Was it Maritas?
We recommend, of course, that these be done ASAP for this coming school year, so that any necessary changes can be implemented, so that they will align with the upcoming wellness policy and new NICED regulations. Our ultimate goal in advocating for this review is to enhance and improve extracurricular activities, enrichment opportunities, and learning experiences to ensure we're serving our kids the best we can. PTSA would also like to offer to help to make these revisions, and we have recommendations, you can be sure, to the fundraising policy and to any student government. We also are suggesting an outside training service be employed to raise the standards of our student government, so that our students can fully benefit from these very valuable educational opportunities. We are also willing to investigate these services and possibly share, share the cost. We're willing to possibly contribute to the cost of any of those training services. Just a few examples of why we are concerned, without getting into too much detail. There are some fundraising in the middle school, but when students enter high school, they start fundraising in ninth grade, and it's not really clear what they're fundraising for. Some people say it's for prom, some people say it's for field trips, some people say it's a little bit for both. And if it is for prom, what's the budget? What's the ceiling? What's the minimum? What are the goals? These are, there's some, there's some vagueness there that needs to be cleared up. How many fundraisers? What sort of fundraisers? Are all the fundraisers in-house? Are we doing community service fundraisers? Are we doing service for whoever outside of the, out of the school? Another point, often, large sums of money have been left in class accounts, and yet still, families are paying for prom and graduation costs out of pocket. This is not good. Student government has no stated goals or set curriculum. Many kids say merely, it's merely a population contest and a title, and that they have no real power. We believe these are really great learning experiences, and in many areas, and believe that, and that we should raise the bar for our kids on both of these items, and we're running down.
Anybody else for a public input? Okay, all right. We'll turn the time over to your Mrs. Graves. Thank you very much. Super good.
If you look above, it's pick a card, not just any card. If you are participating in our goal-setting tonight, if you're a Board of Education, you would have had a green card, it'd have a number on it, and each of the tables have a number, please join that table. And no, you can't be swapping cards at this point. I'll be kind to you. I will know administrators have purple cards, and they join the table. So, I have table one, I have table two, three, and four. If you're a community member and you have a yellow card and would like to participate, I would have given you a card, or I could have handed you a card. Did you get a card? Oh, my goodness.
We were here at quarter of eleven. I'm like, good. How are you?
You know, she, she had to work five days a week, which is not loving. For Sundays, Friday and Sunday, I have to say, like, she, she thought she was loving it. She's just digging out. She's only gonna work three, four days, three days a week as a volunteer, but last week she's just tuning up. But it's so funny, because she's had two, three, four, five, that's what I'm gonna be doing, doesn't it?
Have fun, thank you for having me.
Like, don't take it for a woman who wants to, how about? It's funny, because she's not a real boss. She comes there in the morning, I don't know why I would put her in front of the people who are, she stays late, sometimes an hour later, so.
Which one? I think so, yeah. She's looking hard. She actually has two tears.
She's got a lot of feedback that's really positive, so it's good. It's good for her.
Three, two, one, and it's the elementary principal, it's still talking. The first thing I'm gonna ask you, my name's Katie Graves, I'm the superintendent here, but I'm also facilitating the evening, and you were doing the one thing I wanted you to do. Oh, my goodness. Would you please, I'm gonna put you on the clock for three minutes, would you go around to your table and introduce yourselves to each other? Thank you. And I'm gonna put you on the clock, please do that, not the goal. Your table.
Just introduce ourselves, just in case you forgot a name and you embarrassed. Ken Dorf, Karen Tietzger.
The word carry and arrow together.
Is that how it's spelled?
Felt clearer with the emotions.
It's like, carry arrow.
I think this one's actually easier.
You're gonna be karaoke, carry arrow.
I know, don't worry. Mine was, okay.
But every time I pronounce your previous last name, Sam, it always corrects me, whatever I say.
Was it Marius? No, oh, but Marius was, was that Greek?
You say that as a Greek as bad, I'm not Greek.
No, mine are only a year apart, but you're in the works.
And he's carry arrow Italian?
Director of Mathetics and Supervisor of Buildings and Brass.
My goal is that we can get the goals down tonight. There's no reason we can't.
I told my mom not to go tomorrow.
You know what? We had a retreat, we had a board retreat with the, with the, this retreat last night. There's no reason why you can't do it all, on one session, if it's run correctly.
How did she get you two to sit down?
I've got new body language, you guys are finishing up, I like this, okay. Did you finish? I had a nice reminder from our technology director that the microphone picks up everything in this room.
Oh, my.
So, and we will be putting this live, so be careful of your oversharing. My children call OS, oversharing.
TMI.
The first thing I think that's most important when we set goals is to create an atmosphere where we establish the tone in the room, because we're going to have to say things that maybe we didn't accomplish this year, and why we didn't. So, we wanna feel safe to say, gosh, we didn't get that done, or wow, we did really well, and then we can take credit for something. Also, we have to sit here and say the things we had to hear tonight, like, we could do better with, with some of our children, we could do a better job. And you know what? We have to be able to, we're receptive to that. So, one of the things that I, my first charge is, I have to start making everybody feel safe here. So, discussing your groups, who are the leaders in this room, and why? And why, do we need to feel safe and valued to take risks? Why and why not? You have to, to, you know, and so are, who are the leaders here in this room, and why? And do we need to feel safe and valued to take risks? Why and why not? So, and if you would do me a favor, as we move through, in groups, there's a thing called groupthink, that the loudest, most aggressive person often takes charge of, of sometimes a table, or a room, or a boardroom. And I'm an introvert, which my, people that work with me know very well, and so sometimes I struggle finding my words. And so, make sure we give a chance for the person that is the last to speak. So, make sure that, you know, what, that's why they have Robert's Rules of Order, so everybody has a chance. So, Stephanie will not mind my saying this.
You're right.
She has no trouble finding her words.
And no filter.
Filtered, she can do OS, as my children call it, really well. She can overshare. So, make sure when we, what, we talk about, who are the leaders in the room and why? And do we need? No, you don't need to feel safe and valued, that's ridiculous! Well, maybe. We might feel a little differently. So, make sure that when we're doing this this evening, I have, I have practiced how to be an extrovert really well, so I have had occasion to be able to put out there how I feel, but let's make sure everybody at, at the table gets a chance. So, I'm putting you back on the clock, and you've got another three minutes to do that work. Let's go.
Oh, good, yeah, thank you. You are a leader, you clearly a leader, Scott.
All right, Kate.
I think that the kids are leaders in the district, in the district that don't should be.
President, move out of the room.
It's nice, it's nice.
So, in the room, who are the leaders?
I've, I've.
Am I going or are you going?
I think that we are all leaders in our own way, whether we lead as a dictator, or as a board member, or.
Actually, I want to, this team, this is their union, and I have that.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, do you need to start feeling valued?
Why not?
I'm saying, yes, we need to feel safe and valued, we need to take risks, because we don't feel safe enough to take risks.
Yeah.
You may get a lot of backlash if you're taking this risk and it doesn't work out well.
Or, what's the group's share, though?
We need to all share, I think.
I agree with pretty much everything, you know, in everybody's own way, I think, we're all leaders, you know, in different aspects. And of course, I think we all experience the fact that when you don't feel safe, it makes you a little bit more vulnerable. Maybe safe doesn't necessarily mean there will be no backup, you know, when someone has some idea of what the amount of potential, whatever risks there are, what all the possible are. When you don't know that, you're likely reluctant to act. I don't know how this could turn out. I like to avoid that, of course.
I agree with Chase, the students are the leaders. I think we are all leaders, but our students are always in our district and some of our students are really, because we sometimes, they might have mentioned like a very, very comment, but much, we get flattered, we just, but we all, I do it all the time. Beyond safe and valued, I agree, I disagree, and for example, I went offline towards the high end, or was it crazy towards big votes, and there was something else going on? If I put that for actually, I was not for understanding, or whatever, I don't think I would have gotten that. But I think it's dependent on the situation, who the person is. So, safe and valued, if somebody didn't feel valued, there was a lot of history that didn't happen, because they weren't, they didn't take risks. And safe, I think you can feel safe when you're telling.
Self, self-safety, mission.
Are we taking notes, or are we just? Who's gonna, you'll be the spokesperson.
I don't know, for leaders, I have a slightly different view of it. I do think that students are the reason why the school exists, but I think of leadership also as the people who take the decisions. And that, the students really, they're students, they're minors, they can't take a lot of important decisions, so the leaders have to be, like in a governor, we're leaders in different things. You're the leader in thinking financially, you're the leader in, but the board has to, to me, lead the greater direction of the school, and the administrators have to lead in making that happen. So, I do see leadership in that, that they're the grownups who have to lead where the school goes for the benefit of the children.
So, I'm gonna give you about sixty more seconds to wrap up.
Oh, I meant, safe and valued?
Not a hundred percent, I think if you're a hundred percent safe, you probably don't do anything, but, you know, it does help to be safe and valued to take risks, if you're likely.
I know most people in the room have stepped up to take some really, to me, leadership is being willing to do, kind of go above and beyond, or take on additional responsibility, or help others get to a different place, and everyone here does that in their own way, and that their people in the community are here, tell them that they're leaders.
So, I'm gonna bring you back, is five, four, three.
I have a different perspective of safe and valued, I think a lot of it has to do with the personality, there are people who, in the craziest circumstances, are willing to take a risk. I'm not risk averse, my brother, he's still working the safe job for thirty-three years and will never leave unless someone packs his gas, carries him, and he has it.
So, I'm gonna bring everybody back, and I want to do the, we're gonna start with leaders.
For the general population, they're more likely to take risks of it.
So, was there consensus at any of your tables about who are the leaders in this room? Eric's nodding, what did you?
We found that Diana and Matt were the leaders, both by title, and just general.
And the rest of you are just slackers, right? Nobody else was leaders at the table?
Oh, I, I, I think we're all, I'm not specifically no joke, but I think we are all leaders just by being here and being part in this, and in different contexts, so I do certainly feel like a leader, but I'm willing to give the title up for the evening.
All right, I can relax. All right, 'cause I'll, I'll go with that, because I saw quite a bit of leadership up here. I think you were pushing us around, 'cause I was planning on putting that on the thing tonight, I was like, oh, no, no, we have to do that, too. How about back there? What were you thinking?
Who's gonna be a leader?
We went with the safe answers of everyone and no one.
Everyone and no one? Where did the no one come from?
I, I, I put up the no one. The idea that in a, in a successful organization, it's run from the bottom up, and we don't have any students here, so. And we also went with everyone, so.
That was, I tell you, if you were Irish Catholic, that was a beautiful guilt moment. Oh, man, I could just embrace that. That's so true, we should have kids here, that's, that's beautiful. How about over here?
I think we looked around and felt we're all leaders, that's part of why we're sitting in this room.
We felt the same way, and just by default of being here, we're all leaders, and just showing up.
And I think sometimes we, there, there is a point where we sometimes, to Chase's point, we walk by, the people that have the most important points are those that are sometimes the quietest, that are the most in need, and that we really have to be listening all the time. It's that intense listening that, that is so imperative to, to great leaders. How about the, was there conversation around safe and valued, or was that just a dumb question for me to ask? Just ask.
Mike says he doesn't have any feelings, so.
No.
He said he felt valued, but safety is even those, right?
I just said it wasn't something palpable, like, it wasn't something, but I don't think it's necessary to do what we need to do.
Okay. Any other thoughts, um, you know?
And we talked about how it's easier to take a risk and try something new, if you, and even if you make a mistake, it's easier to own up to that, if you feel like those people around you are supportive and like, it's okay, we'll figure it out, like, let's try something else, it's just easier.
But also, you don't need to feel safe and valued if you feel passionate about something, that might be what brings you to taking a risk.
That's a great point, wow, yeah.
And Matt made a great point about making sure that, you know, that the goal isn't always safety in the term of sort of complacency, like, sometimes it's important to still feel safe enough to get out of that comfort zone, so you're not always to feel safe, because sometimes the things that you need to do are gonna put you out there, and you need to take those risks and, and put them out there.
Right.
Kind of what you were saying, but to not have safety take the form of, I'm just in this, you know, warm, kind of cushy place, and it's all good, and we need to get here on that, and, and do things that, that count, with people that we, you know, that we know have our best interests as well.
Right, right, 'cause, 'cause change always happens with those, the, those that are at the forefront, right? That are, you know, willing to feel that, yeah.
The other point that came up was just that there's a, a very wide range of comfort zones around this. There are some people that are very risk averse, and you gotta drag them out of their safety spot, no matter how valued and loved and supported they are, and others that are very comfortable taking risks regardless of their environment, and so it's a whole continuum, and, and different people are in different places on that continuum.
Yeah, yeah. My youngest daughter always says to me, people actually want to skydive, Mom. I was like, yeah, but yet she'll go to the women's march down in Washington DC, and I was like, oh, my gosh, just that at twenty years old, she would get on that bus, and she's like, yeah, gotta do that. And I was, oh, couldn't even imagine doing the things that somebody's fixed to.
I think it comes with age, Katie, too.
What, you wanna skydive?
Relative to that, but the safety and risk element.
Oh, yeah.
Once you get older, there's none of the gray hair born in this room by long time.
That just was.
Thank you.
How about back here? We didn't talk that much about it.
I think we answered, yes, right, to, to feel safe and valued, to take risks.
Well, I think this is it. Well, I'm gonna think it wasn't a dumb question, I think there's some really broad answers. So, establish a tone for our meeting to target setting the goals, and want you to watch this TED Talk. Simon Sinek is one of my favorite leadership people, because I am an introvert, and I have to go feed myself, I watch TED Talks pretty voraciously, I do two or three a week. And so, the questions I'm gonna ask you actively this is, how does this talk apply to our leadership, and how does it apply to our goal-setting tonight? And maybe have some examples, and yes, I do want you to start that for me, make sure it's a Simon Sinek, thank you, I'm gonna be a little needy here, 'cause the link's not working.
There's a man by the name of Captain William Swenson, who recently was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor for his actions on September eighth, two thousand nine. On that day, a column of American and Afghan troops were making their way through a part of Afghanistan to help protect a group of government officials, a group of Afghan government officials, who'd be meeting with some local village elders. The column came under ambush and was surrounded on three sides, and amongst many other things, Captain Swenson was recognized for running into live fire to rescue the wounded and pull out the dead. One of the people he rescued was a sergeant, and he and a comrade were making their way to a medevac helicopter. And what was remarkable about this day is by sheer coincidence, one of the medevac medics happened to have a GoPro camera on his helmet, and captured the whole scene on camera. It shows Captain Swenson and his comrade bringing this wounded soldier who received a gunshot to the neck. They put him in the helicopter, and then you see Captain Swenson bend over and give him a kiss before he turns around to rescue more. I saw this, and I thought to myself, where do people like that come from? What is that? That is some deep, deep emotion, when you would want to do that. There's a, there's a, there's a love there. And I wanted to know, why is it that I don't have people that I work with like that? You know, in the military, they give medals to people who are willing to sacrifice themselves so that others may gain. In business, we give bonuses to people who are willing to sacrifice others so that we may gain. So, I asked myself, where do people like this come from? And my initial conclusion was that they're just better people. That's why they're attracted to the military, these better people are attracted to this concept of service. But that's completely wrong. What I learned is that it's the environment. And if you get the environment right, every single one of us has the capacity to do these remarkable things, and more importantly, others have that capacity, too. I've had the great honor of getting to meet some of these who we would call heroes, who've put themselves and put their lives at risk to save others. And I asked them, why would you do it? Why did you do it? And they all say the same thing, because they would have done it for me. It's this deep sense of trust and cooperation. So, trust and cooperation are really important here. The problem with concepts of trust and cooperation is that they are feelings, they're not instructions. I can't simply say to you, trust me, and you will. I can't simply instruct two people to cooperate, and they will. It's not how it works, it's a feeling. So, where does that feeling come from? If you go back fifty thousand years, to the Paleolithic era, to the early days of Homo sapiens, what we find is that the world was filled with danger. All of these forces working very, very hard to kill us, nothing personal, whether it was the weather, lack of resources, maybe a saber-toothed tiger, all of these things working to reduce our lifespan. And so, we evolved into social animals, where we lived together and worked together, in what I call a circle of safety, inside the tribe, where we felt like we belonged. And when we felt safe amongst our own, the natural reaction was trust and cooperation. There are apparent benefits to this, it means I can fall There are apparent benefits to this. It means I can fall asleep at night and trust that someone from within my tribe will watch for danger. If we don't trust each other, if I don't trust you, that means you won't watch for danger. Bad system of survival. The modern day is exactly the same thing. The world is filled with danger. Things that are trying to frustrate our lives or reduce our success, reduce our opportunity for success. It could be the ups and downs of an economy, the uncertainty of the stock market. It could be a new technology that renders your business model obsolete overnight. Or it could be your competition that is sometimes trying to kill you, it's sometimes trying to put you out of business, but at the very minimum, is working hard to frustrate your growth and steal your business from you. We have no control over these forces. These are a constant, and they're not going away. The only variable are the conditions inside the organization. And that's where leadership matters, because it's the leader that sets the tone. When a leader makes the choice to put the safety and lives of the people inside the organization first, to sacrifice their comforts and sacrifice the tangible results, so that the people remain and feel safe and feel like they belong, remarkable things happen. I was flying on a trip, and I was witness to an incident where a passenger attempted to board before their number was called. And I watched the gate agent treat this man like he had broken the law, like a criminal. He was yelled at for attempting to board one group too soon. So I said something. I said, why do you have to treat us like cattle? Why can't you treat us like human beings? And this is exactly what she said to me. She said, sir, if I don't follow the rules, I could get in trouble or lose my job. All she was telling me is that she doesn't feel safe. All she was telling me is that she doesn't trust her leaders. The reason we like flying Southwest Airlines is not because they necessarily hire better people. It's because they don't fear their leaders. You see, if the conditions are wrong, we're forced to expend our own time and energy to protect ourselves from each other. And that inherently weakens the organization. When we feel safe inside the organization, we will naturally combine our talents and our strengths and work tirelessly to face the dangers outside and seize the opportunities. The closest analogy I can give to what a great leader is, it's like being a parent. If you think about what being a great parent is, what do you want? What makes a great parent? We want to give our child opportunities, education, discipline when necessary, all so that they can grow up and achieve more than we could for ourselves. Great leaders want exactly the same thing. They want to provide their people opportunity, education, discipline when necessary, build their self-confidence, give them the opportunity to try and fail, all so that they could achieve more than we could ever imagine for ourselves. Charlie Kim, who's the CEO of a company called Next Jump, in New York City, a tech company, he makes the point that if you had hard times in your family, would you ever consider laying off one of your children? We would never do it. Then why do we consider laying off people inside our organization? Charlie implemented a policy of lifetime employment. If you get a job at Next Jump, you cannot get fired for performance issues. In fact, if you have issues, they will coach you, and they will give you support, just like we would with one of our children, who happens to come home with a C in school. It's the complete opposite. This is the reason so many people have such a visceral hatred, dis- sort of anger at some of these banking CEOs with their disproportionate salaries and bonus structures. It's not the numbers. It's that they have violated the very definition of leadership. They have violated this deep-seated social contract. We know that they allowed their people to be sacrificed so they could protect their own interests. Or worse, they sacrificed their people to protect their own interests. This is what so offends us, not the numbers. Would anybody be offended if we gave a hundred and fifty million dollar bonus to Gandhi? How about a two hundred and fifty million dollar bonus to Mother Teresa? Do we have an issue with that? None at all. None at all. Great leaders would never sacrifice the people to save the numbers. They would sooner sacrifice the numbers to save the people. Bob Chapman, who runs a large manufacturing company in the Midwest called Barry Waymiller, in 2008, who's hit very hard by the recession, and they lost thirty percent of their orders overnight. Now, in a large manufacturing company, this is a big deal, and they could no longer afford their labor pool. They needed to save ten million dollars. So, like so many companies today, the board got together and discussed layoffs. And Bob refused. You see, Bob doesn't believe in head counts. Bob believes in heart counts, and it's much more difficult to simply reduce the heart count. And so they came up with a furlough program. Every employee from secretary to CEO was required to take four weeks of unpaid vacation. They could take it anytime they wanted, and they did not have to take it consecutively. But it was how Bob announced the program that mattered so much. He said, it's better that we should all suffer a little than any of us should have to suffer a lot. And morale went up. They saved twenty million dollars. And most importantly, as would be expected, when the people feel safe and protected by the leadership in the organization, the natural reaction is to trust and cooperate. And quite spontaneously, nobody expected, people started trading with each other. Those who could afford it more would trade with those who could afford it less. People would take five weeks so that somebody else only had to take three. Leadership is a choice. It is not a rank. I know many people at the seniormost levels of organizations who are absolutely not leaders. They are authorities. And we do what they say because they have authority over us, but we would not follow them. And I know many people who are at the bottoms of organizations who have no authority, and they are absolutely leaders. And this is because they have chosen to look after the person to the left of them, and they have chosen to look after the person to the right of them. This is what a leader is. I heard a story of some Marines who were out in theater. And as is the Marine custom, the officer ate last, and he let his men eat first. And when they were done, there was no food left for him. And when they went back out in the field, his men brought him some of their food so that he may eat. Because that's what happens. We call them leaders because they go first. We call them leaders because they take the risk before anybody else does. We call them leaders because they will choose to sacrifice so that their people may be safe and protected, and so their people may gain. And when we do, the natural response is that our people will sacrifice for us. They will give us their blood, sweat, and tears to see that their leader's vision comes to life. And when we ask them, why would you do that? Why would you give your blood and sweat and tears for that person? They all say the same thing, because they would have done it for me. And isn't that the organization we would all like to work in? Thank you very much.
Okay, so you have a little bit of work to do with that. You're just going to spend like two minutes discussing with your table about how does that piece of leadership apply to our goal setting? And I'm gonna give you just one of my little, you know, because I've got to be a little bossy here. And don't get me looking at the clock, because we're starting work right now, is we work with children. Our work is with children. We sat up here tonight talking about children. So I'm gonna be a little bossy about sharing your conversation a little bit, but how does this whole talk you just heard apply to our leadership, because we all agree we're leaders, in our goal setting tonight? And if you say, ah, I can't even make a connection, Katie, I have no idea. It's nice, it was interesting, but nothing there. And I'm gonna put the slide up, and I'm gonna need you to work with. You're making you the boss right there. Talking points, I'm gonna put the slides in just a second. There's a talking point. And there's the talking point.
So you're feeling safe and valued here?
If you get hungry, if you get a little hungry, go for a lobster claw. But that's not really shellfish, I guess.
Oh, it is.
It is, right?
I didn't like that TED Talk so much.
I did not think it was a good one at all.
I want you guys to take it over. But anyway.
Try and stay positive. Well, I mean, so, you know, I just put on tonight, you know, that's why I'm here tonight. Let's be mindful. But let's be mindful of people around my children.
So that if my kid has some sort of an issue or something, it should probably, um, to me, I know that there's someone else that she will go and talk to. I guess I'm being like, making me feel more safe than her. Because I'm like, someone else will take care of it. But you see, I'm telling you, I'm just like. So that's.
And that's what I've got to say. But I spun that out at the end.
That is a TED Talk, well, the whole thing was talking about leadership. It's not a leaf to say, how does that apply to leadership? He said leadership, I think, eighteen times during that, right?
In certain culture. My wife works for John Deere, they don't play with it, and it works for them.
They don't what?
Maybe it's gonna work for everyone.
They don't what?
They haven't inspired anybody else.
And it depends on, it depends on, it depends on a little bit. You know, with a small startup company, it's very different than an established one. It's very different, and it's a public, yeah. That company, what he was talking about was not a public company. A public company, you're gonna be able to do that. But I think the whole thing was mostly about leadership, so I'm not sure why the answer was applied. I would say that.
Culture starts with the original vision.
The assumptions of what the others. So the leadership is what, I'm sure is a, either way.
You know, I do agree with what he was saying about as really good leaders, it's not about necessarily the power that's been in the children, but it's about how you interact with your world and how you lift other people's up to create success. That was a lot of his message that he put up. But it transcends to school environment and some of the, you know, private sectors, different, what you're required to be.
I'm struggling with how though this relates to the tonight's purpose. And I'm not sure, are we discussing this, so we figure leadership among our group? Or is it about goal setting?
I don't understand how that relates to exercise, you know, really. I mean, there are, I've seen TED Talks that have to do with achieving, like how you work to achieve that. And achieve your goals, that was a link to that. But there was some nuggets in there that were little jewels. And that might be a goal.
Which correlates so many different.
Hope there's more to that. There's to be an hour and fifteen minutes in and not having to talk about goals, and just to talk about how we can work together to talk about goals. I'm hoping, I'm hoping there's more to that, to this, because if this is really about how we're just gonna have our conversation.
We'll be here for three nights.
We're gonna be here next week. What was the second question? There was a second question on there.
I mean, there's, there's physical safety, actual safety.
You're peeking ahead.
But there are some really good TED Talks about how organizations have been able to do kind of almost the impossible. And, you know, it's identifying, aspirational identification, being able to dissect their past, to having a short list, how you mobilize an organization to achieve. Like, those are the kinds of things that are usually taught us in the talk we back, that we choose. I think something that I would like to.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't so specific.
It could be three nights this week.
It didn't have any pressure attached to it.
What I think we talked about last night was that we've set, we've been setting these annual goals, but the reality is many of the goals are multi-year, and that we really should have a different perspective and really look at it as a. Because every year, you know, it's like, okay, that was last year's, and then you go to next year's.
I'm so glad, I'm so glad when somebody, because when you think goal setting, you think.
Oh, this word is great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Minerva. Thank you.
Um, because I, any, one, maybe one takeaway from each table? Because there was a lot of really powerful conversation. I was really glad to hear that. Because, you know, this can be like watching paint dry, the way you think of goal setting, and I'm like, we think of powerful conversation. And I just had that on video. So can I start with this table? Any powerful takeaway?
As I'm the designated speaker of this group. Well, so both Mike and I spoke as administrators in our school, you know, just regarding like things that we could do to make kids feel safer, so that they feel that they're supported by their leaders in the school. And like the presence in our buildings are obviously the teachers. They're like the first point of contact for kids. So it's kind of the conscientious of looking for things.
And I want to play the game afterwards. Go ahead. I'll stay late and play.
This is a good one.
Most of us go through life trying to do our best at whatever we do, whether it's our job, family, school, or anything else. I feel that way. I try my best. But some time ago, I came to the realization that I wasn't getting much better at the things I cared most about, whether it was being a husband, or a friend, or a professional, or teammate. And I wasn't improving much at those things even though I was spending a lot of time working hard at them. I've since realized from conversations I've had and from research that this stagnation despite hard work turns out to be pretty common. So I'd like to share with you some insights into why that is and what we can all do about it. What I've learned is that the most effective people and teams in any domain do something we can all emulate. They go through life deliberately alternating between two zones: the learning zone and the performance zone. The learning zone is when our goal is to improve. Then, we do activities designed for improvement, concentrating on what we haven't mastered yet, which means we have to expect to make mistakes, knowing that we will learn from them. That is very different from what we do when we're in our performance zone, which is when our goal is to do something as best as we can, to execute. Then, we concentrate on what we have already mastered and we try to minimize mistakes. Both of these zones should be part of our lives, but being clear about when we want to be in each of them, with what goal, focus, and expectations helps us better perform and better improve. The performance zone maximizes our immediate performance, while the learning zone maximizes our growth and our future performance. The reason many of us don't improve much despite our hard work is that we tend to spend almost all of our time in the performance zone. This hinders our growth, and ironically, over the long term, also our performance. So what does the learning zone look like? Take Demosthenes, a political leader and the greatest orator and lawyer in ancient Greece. To become great, he didn't spend all his time just being an orator or a lawyer, which would be his performance zone. But instead, he did activities designed for improvement. Of course, he studied a lot. He studied law and philosophy with guidance from mentors. But he also realized that being a lawyer involved persuading other people. So he also studied great speeches and acting. To get rid of an odd habit we had of involuntarily lifting our shoulder, he practiced his speeches in front of a mirror. And he suspended a sword from the ceiling so that if he raised his shoulder, it would hurt. To speak more clearly despite a list, he went through his speeches with stones in his mouth. He built an underground room where he could practice without interruptions and not disturb other people. And since courts at the time were very noisy, he also practiced by the ocean, projecting his voice above the roar of the waves. His activities in the learning zone were very different from his activities in court, his performance zone. In the learning zone, he did what Dr. Anders Ericsson calls deliberate practice. This involves breaking down abilities into component skills, being clear about what sub-skill we're working to improve by keeping our shoulders down, giving full concentration to a high level of challenge outside our comfort zone, just beyond what we can currently do, using frequent feedback with repetition and adjustments, and ideally engaging the guidance of a skilled coach. Because activities designed for improvement are domain-specific, and great teachers and coaches know what those activities are and can also give us expert feedback. It is this type of practice in the learning zone which leads to substantial improvement, not just time on task, performing. For example, research shows that after the first couple of years working in a profession, performance usually plateaus. This has been shown to be true in teaching, general medicine, nursing, and other fields. And it happens because, once we think we've become good enough, adequate, then, we stop spending time in the learning zone. We focus all our time on just doing our job, performing, which turns out not to be a great way to improve. But the people who continue to spend time in the learning zone do continue to always improve. The best salespeople, at least once a week, do activities with the goal of improvement. They read to extend their knowledge, consult with colleagues or domain experts, try out new strategies, solicit feedback, and reflect. The best chess players spend a lot of time not playing games of chess, which would be their performance zone, but trying to predict the moves grandmasters made and analyzing them. Each of us has probably spent many, many, many hours typing on our computer without getting faster. But if we spend ten to twenty minutes each day fully concentrated on typing ten to twenty percent faster than our current reliable speed, we would get faster, especially if we also identified what mistakes we're making and practiced typing those words. That's deliberate practice. In what other parts of our lives, perhaps that we care more about, are we working hard but not improving much because we're always in the performance zone? Now, this is not to say that the performance zone has no value. It very much does. When I needed knee surgery, I didn't tell the surgeon, "Poke around in there and focus on what you don't know." "We'll learn from your mistakes." I looked for a surgeon who I thought would do a good job, and I wanted her to do a good job. Being in the performance zone allows us to get things done as best as we can. It can also be motivating, and it provides us with information to identify what to focus on next when we go back to the learning zone. So the way to high performance is to alternate between the learning zone and the performance zone, purposely building our skills in the learning zone, then applying those skills in the performance zone. When Beyonce is on tour, during the concert, she's in her performance zone. But every night, when she gets back to the hotel room, she goes right back into her learning zone. She watches a video of the show that just ended. She identifies opportunities for improvement for herself, her dancers, and her camera staff. And the next morning, everyone receives pages of notes with what to adjust, which they then work on during the day before the next performance. It's a spiral to ever-increasing capabilities, but we need to know when we seek to learn and when we seek to perform. And while we want to spend time doing both, the more time we spend in the learning zone, the more we'll improve. So how can we spend more time in the learning zone? First, we must believe and understand that we can improve, what we call a growth mindset. Second, we must want to improve at that particular skill. There has to be a purpose we care about, because it takes time and effort. Third, we must have an idea about how to improve, what we can do to improve. Not how I used to practice guitar as a teenager, performing songs over and over again, but doing deliberate practice. And fourth, we must be in a low-stakes situation. Because if mistakes are to be expected, then the consequence of making them must not be catastrophic or even very significant. A tight-rope walker doesn't practice new tricks without a net underneath, and an athlete wouldn't set out to first try a new move during a championship match. One reason that in our lives, we spend so much time in the performance zone is that our environments often are unnecessarily high stakes. We create social risks for one another, even in schools which are supposed to be all about learning, and I'm not talking about standardized tests. I mean that every minute of every day, many students in elementary schools through colleges feel that if they make a mistake, others will think less of them. No wonder they're always stressed out and not taking the risks necessary for learning. But they learn that mistakes are undesirable inadvertently when teachers or parents are eager to hear just correct answers and reject mistakes rather than welcome and examine them to learn from them, or when we look for narrow responses rather than encourage more exploratory thinking that we can all learn from. When all homework or student work has a number or a letter on it and comes toward a final grade, rather than being used for practice, mistakes, feedback, and revision, we send a message that school is a performance zone. The same is true in our workplaces. In the companies I consult with, I often see flawless execution cultures, which leaders foster to encourage great work, but it leads employees to stay within what they know and not try new things. So companies struggle to innovate and improve, and they fall behind. We can create more spaces for growth by starting conversations with one another about when we want to be in each zone, what do we want to get better at, and how, and when do we want to execute and minimize mistakes. That way, we gain clarity about what success is, when, and how to best support one another. But what if we find ourselves in a chronic high-stakes setting, and we feel we can't start those conversations, yet? And here are three things we can still do as individuals. First, we can create low-stakes islands in an otherwise high-stakes sea. These are spaces where mistakes have little consequence. For example, we might find a mentor or a trusted colleague with whom we can exchange ideas or have vulnerable conversations, or even role-play. Or we can ask for feedback-oriented meetings as projects progress. Or we can set aside time to read, or watch videos, or take online courses. Those are just some examples. Second, we can execute and perform as we're expected, but then reflect on what we could do better next time, like Beyonce does. And we can observe and emulate experts. The observation, reflection, and adjustment is a learning zone. And finally, we can lead and lower the stakes for others by sharing what we want to get better at, by asking questions about what we don't know, by soliciting feedback, and by sharing our mistakes and what we've learned from them so that others can feel safe to do the same. Real confidence is about modeling ongoing learning. What if, instead of spending our lives doing, 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 performing, 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 we spent more time exploring, asking, listening, experimenting, reflecting, striving, and becoming? What if we each always had something we were working to improve? What if we created more low-stakes islands and waters? And what if we got clear within ourselves and with our teammates about when we seek to learn and when we seek to perform so that our efforts can become more consequential, our improvements never ending, and our best even better? Thank you.
Well, I was gonna have you talk about that, but we're not doing that now. Because we're going on, because my notes are ready. So just to check for understanding, you are going to take the last three years, we're gonna take this top one off. So let me just use this, don't take, don't use this one. I hope you really found that powerful. I thought that was very powerful, because we're talking a lot about mindset, and we're gonna be talking about that with the teachers, so now you're ahead of the game. So skip this one. We're not using this one. We're moving on. You should have a set of scissors, and you're gonna put them into three categories: done, doing, and to-do. I will also leave a table, the administrators on goals, the building level goals that were attached to these for last year. And then I also have the two for the to-dos, which you don't have to cut up when you get to that point.
Are we gonna cut the gold?
Cut the gold.
I always love Darcy Press.
So are we doing it for the past several years?
So I'm presuming I'm doing this, alright?
Yeah.
Correct? Which ones like cut?
You have to cut them all like this.
Yes. So you're gonna cut each gold like this? Let's do it first and then.
No, once you cut it up.
Well, you're right. There are several already in one thing, but you don't have to cut them all together.
Hold on. These are three different ones. So what are we starting? Are we gonna start with the last, the most recent year?
Yeah.
Okay, that's six and seventeen. So this one, so the first one, the first one A is impossible to revise. And B, we did not do it.
Oh, no.
I think that between the number one and the number two, the other one is like the...
Isn't that the fact rubber experience that we're doing throughout this?
Like, we haven't done it. A, we're doing, and B, is that the to-do. But the two, some of these are very, very different. Some are done and some are... We haven't...
Well, we, hold on. We are doing B, and we're discussing the board mission.
Right, so that's the one.
We didn't do it.
So one is doing.
And then have it with number two.
Implement mid-year, we're doing, but we're not doing anymore, so we can craft.
There's no deciding not to do, but...
Sorry. So B, not after, and A, not do it. So decide, and then assess.
Yeah, Diana? Which one do you see?
I'm on A. We've been, we've always been on A. We've got our role as administrator. Implement early intervention programs, strategy.
I got fourteen six months.
That also be encouraging, so merit as well as something to do more. And then provide special development for conference, always ongoing.
Communication.
So these are all doing. That's doing. It's all doing.
It's all doing. There you go.
Wait, hold on. Three is doing. So we plan to try to let it be, just to make sure it's not already fucking the only two. But then twenty thirteen, Bonn, that should be doing. We're doing.
No, but this is the plan for you, but I haven't done. No, that's a plan. Secure bids and move forward. That hasn't happened.
I, but secure bids and move forward, that's done. I mean, we have secured bids and we're going. That's two thousand thirteen. Oh, sorry. Okay, so let's do it.
Alright, so determine the structural needs for the identified program to be called the SSMAS of performance merit, right?
That's to-do.
That's to-do. Identify structural needs and potential revenue source, that's to-do. Secure bids to meet structural needs, bids, bids.
That's all to do.
All this to do. Okay, so four is to do, and everything else is doing. Got it, right. I've cut the ones that's...
You have this one on thing.
Same cutting. I think I love to cut.
And look what I'm writing on, are you good? Don't make a mistake, because I'm gonna write this is done.
What's done?
Yeah, don't write down here, it's gonna be both copies.
Where's the always blue? Oh, we have tape on it.
Okay, so this is fifteen, sixteen?
You know what? You know why I'm going through this? Because it's gonna be almost done. Nothing done. So what we're gonna hear is, we already have a list, we can start. That's what it's called for.
Becoming an active pathway for schools, we need to go into our best business.
And in chat.
These are all visions.
The show right here. That's how we do it. No, it's the other side.
I think the other side, alright, ready? Launch a new website with enhanced information.
To-do.
Well, I feel like we're, we're doing.
This is one year.
We did launch a new website.
We did.
I feel like it's done. Hold on. We already did that back. It's done. Launch a new website.
Right, it's being launched, but yes, it was done.
Done. Let's go a bit about them. Continue.
Yes, yes.
And all the, that's all done.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's actually do.
I was on the committee that I had that. Alright, so we have to decide. Does that, Paris?
Cybercrime thing and all that?
You did, for terms?
Nobody hate. We got out, yeah.
Alright, then I would say, it's done. The cyber one, I don't even know what it is. High school has been nothing.
Get out of here.
We're not done with settlement. We're doing it.
Because I feel like we're doing it.
We're doing it.
We're doing it. It's like a lot of...
Implement electronic service system prepared.
To-do. No, we're... There's a discussion about that. We've done, in three years, we've done two. Two and three times. This is regular. We've just been no...
So, wait a minute. Is this all one communication goal that we put in one place?
Oh, sorry. Done. This is dead. This is so dead.
So this is to-do, and all, these are to-do, and these two are doing. These two are doing. Oh, done, I see.
What's gonna be interesting is, we're gonna have different things on the sheet, because different people.
No different things.
Right, that's, that's the other chain. Everybody looks at these differently.
Well, what I'm curious about is, do these, do these have like some objectives or measurables or something like that? Is there a plan?
There's more? That's not...
No, 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 no. You see what happened was, when we printed them, we printed them, we printed them on both sides. So when you cut it, you can't do it. But I didn't cut it.
Okay. Ready? Promote the ten positive principles that are essential. Focus on our actress and her friends, and my guy, trade all these. I feel like that's done, and it's like you're always doing that. That's part of, that's a building level. Well... That's our job. This is our job. We're always doing it.
That's a challenge with these general goals, without the subset of the specific things are. It's everything that was out there.
This one's done.
Done, but it now needs to be reflected upon.
Yeah, we have some gaps.
But it's done, with reflected.
We're reflecting still, Warren.
When I put in the done part file? Okay.
Raise desperate for the title.
We need to keep the press for that. Sorry, we need to keep the press for that, please, please. Positive, backup. We do this.
That's done.
When you get to the to-do? That was on to-do list. You can just handwrite something, but that was just on our mind. And this was all, this was this year's attachments of everything we should have. Two thousand thirteen, we're gonna, we're gonna, we have a way to find it.
Okay, this is the other side of that.
Can I ask a question? When you have something like this, build and strengthen community partnerships and something like that. So how would that measure?
That's, that's why I love this.
Sorry, but you might as well.
The performance zone, by the way.
So do you know if there is, if there is, there is several definitions. Do we have that this year too?
I don't know if you all know. We don't have the issue. I don't think for that year.
Utilize data fast, special development, be documents identified, price, or account.
I would say that's done. Then it's done, exactly. Scott's a hundred percent right.
Alright, ready? Okay, accountability. Professional development, departmental, and faculty, faculty, staff, and management review. Implement ASAP, policy, right, negotiate, adopt EPR plan.
So then you have to start with your to-do list.
Okay, hold on. I'm gonna argue this, because the minister, the department, faculty, staff, we have to do.
No, we haven't started.
We do that all the time. Policy management review and update.
Is that that board?
No, 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 no. We have the building level policy. Those are done. Inland ASOP, done.
I think that's done.
There's clock all around the building.
There's clock all around building, and there's people climbing.
I think that we're... I think we'd be ready to die. Doesn't mean that these aren't meant to be, you can never count that they're done because three years from now, it may require it to be changed. At that time, right, so, right. You can never check that box. Alright, so cut that, take the...
Be organized by total coverage, meaning with years, and we need to get a former cell merit property to do it. Work with all client community stakeholders in terms of the ability, and person to cell merit by putting down. Those plans, we need to believe the evaluation of our current facilities, need to build. Open see all certain capital projects. Write in presentation and train all personnel.
It's still on job.
See, I did more than I planned.
Hey, proud of you.
Just make more space. Making it pretty.
Alright, fourteen, fifteen, we're up, right? Okay, ready? Implement and first communication strategy to become engaged and active pathway for school and youth. Use letters, work for current and active websites, discuss emails, or comments, video. Uphold and celebrate the ten positive principles. We did this. That year. That year.
It was done that year.
It was done that year. Look, we do something. Three, long range, board education calendar. Did we do that? Create a long range, board education calendar?
Nope.
I feel like every new board is in the process of doing it.
Well, you know what, that was...
It depends on the board.
For me, long range, that means it's just mapping out what we're getting done when. We had one that year, and then we never continued.
But I think that.
Cause long range to me is further than just.
I'm shutting it down.
Tell.
Or education.
Tell Katie Mr. Brighting.
Product of education is overview options for school day start time, we're doing it. Right?
Well, we voted on it.
We voted, we did it.
But now we're doing it again.
So, just to check understanding.
Done, doing.
Um, anything you have done, anything that you're doing, and then to do is any brand initiatives you have discussed just.
I mean, I mean, after we do all this, then we're gonna all start talking about what additional new things we want?
You're doing just on your table, and you're gonna write any to do's, brand new initiatives.
Well, that's gonna take us a while, we're still going through this, so we're not gonna.
Go faster.
We're doing this.
Go faster, go faster, cause you.
We did this.
You know what, though, I don't feel valued when you say it's a race, and I can't be safe enough to do this, and if I were to. So, back off, I mean.
So, you know what it is, maybe there's not as many Norris here.
Yeah, but you.
But you don't hear more.
You know what Diana said last night, you know what President said about Norris? They do it once, and then they do it again.
That's right.
It's your stuff, these questions.
Alright, develop a three to five year physical plan.
So, yeah, it's done.
Develop those plans by June fifteenth, we do that.
No, she, I don't know why she thinks we're gonna actually talk about what.
No, 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 no.
What's this?
But, but, but the meeting really, it shouldn't be a meeting, it's been a long. Here, it's, it's, we have seven minutes to do that. But.
Okay, so, we're, you, well, we're done, we're done, we're done. I'm not, I, I, you know, I've built a home, it's, it's. Okay, so here's this, good, okay, we're back.
So, we have to answer.
Let's cut it up.
How did the ones that were? I got it.
We have this new, like, like the board and. Oh, that's the one she's. But let's talk about what we need, what we need to want.
So, we do a lot of stuff, we put in really good stuff, but we don't, sometimes we focus on like the. But now that.
This is. I, this is.
They're off.
So. So, I would like to have us. We don't look at anything down, because it's the ones that you. And you can't. You can't change what you're doing here, unless you know how it's working, we don't know how it's working, we don't. We don't know how many things we're getting through, like in two years, five years.
It's a post, a postgrad, a postgraduate.
Postgrad.
This is a good one, alright, and he did. But I see this a lot, that's, well, we're about to learn.
Stop reading.
Develop a year long professional development. Didn't ask to say, this is how we're going to.
That's not, that's not board goals. We were, we were. Our goals are not, are not the, the, the specifics that's supposed to be brought, this is to be a specific.
There are organizations that literally, this is all they do, we could just hire somebody.
I was going to say, yeah, because the. Kids leave here.
And then they come back and they count.
And all of a sudden, we make these dropout rates in certain populations in college, and as a matter of fact, some guys, and reflect that when we can. Where's the. And also, when they graduate, there's no database of, of graduates they can connect to, and we don't have jobs to, to, to place a position, even the gate, there's a variety of. It's a platform, it's a.
I'm sorry, village and granny agencies. Train transport issues, it would go to the. And.
To never, I don't even know, that they, said they were going to go to.
Big year, which is.
Like, would you, I mean, determination to. The first.
So, so before we, can I ask a question, if we start to. Breaks on this, where, where do we think we have the qualities or gaps right now in?
I think there are a lot of.
Employee achievement, student achievement, that, that then may require a goal to hold through the droughts.
Well, this program's lecture.
I think maybe that's almost like, that's almost like policy. Yeah.
Well, it's one of the things that came up last year, was we're not using enough, I think, our goals aren't high enough that I can.
No, I mean, what's.
So.
Um, alright.
So, so, so what are, where are our gaps?
I would say, for me, I would say, I think I'm building level, but also, yeah, it's.
There's just no value.
The policy.
So.
That's how I think about that.
So, so increase, increase percent of students. Of students engaging in.
Yeah, it's way in the.
It's, I think that's like.
Yeah.
And they were one year old. Well, I, I, I think, what you said at the hall, then you identify the staff.
You under, you agree, so, yeah.
You're setting up students.
And we talked about how we wanted to get.
Higher level courses, right?
Right.
That's the only one that we. You recommend.
And people would disagree, does that like building levels, but that will.
Right. So, the increase, uh, number of students, or percentage of students in higher level courses.
I'd say courses.
So, we're gonna, we're, our list, hey, our list.
Is.
Slash.
Why, why don't you get something from the meeting before? Oh, now it's been sitting there for four hours, and it's chicken sound, I'm gonna be, ooh, sweet. I've waited ninety minutes, so I said, it was borderline.
But it's also the. We understand that.
We would have almost taken this. So, uh, increased percentage of students in higher level courses are. Um, uh, I asked, I asked before, there's a roast spaghetti on the wall, but maybe we ask the question, are there opportunities or gaps that we. Cause that would help me pull me to go on. But so, I, I, I think you raised the gap and an opportunity at the public input.
I hope so.
So, how, so how would you, how would you characterize that that's put on here?
Well, to have a goal of consciously focusing on diversity and inclusion. Making the school more diverse and more inclusive.
I get it.
You've been telling me you're Italian, but the rest of you wasn't.
My autistic family is Italian. But myself, I, I mean, people used to think that my dad was Vietnam, and that we were like. I'm gonna argue that.
Focusing on diversity and inclusive. I, I, I used to. Focusing on, focusing on diversity and.
Well, the SDM.
Inclusion. Inclusion.
That's just.
Let, let me think about how we're gonna.
I, I think wording wise.
That's done, that's done.
Work on that. Is it, uh, you're creating a school. That is mostly responsive, meaning you're teaching it. Freezes amount going on, it protects domination, and also being mindful of how students stay can affect one student, but students that is a primary possible design for the. So, it's almost like whole train response, and that helps me having P D M.
We have, we have no fundraise in zone.
Each chair revise, revise charter for fifty fourteen six to four to five.
But in my, the way to think about it, there are human backs, the real perspective is, fair isn't always equal, it wasn't always fair, and everybody else is. Yeah.
It's not about homog, it's not about homogenization.
No.
It's about accepting and celebrating the diversity that's.
Yeah, but I would also identify.
Um, if I could work this back together for a moment?
Plus, even if.
I would make friends with Kate over there, we're gonna have to put those up.
And that's why I'm saying.
Then I friends with Kate. Um, let's, really, please, don't, don't put them up yet, though, let me get directions. But take, yes, take, take.
So, um, what are there?
So, let me give some direction.
You mean from an academic, academic standpoint?
You know, in, uh, Sandgover Elementary School, there's one rule, Matt Malone goes like this, because what happens?
Okay.
Actually, that's a.
Is that two L's?
Yes.
Um, this is gonna be the end of our evening, and my recommendation is that we, we will not have a follow up meeting tomorrow night, I, we talked about, it would be a either or. Because we have done the heavy lifting tonight, I know what we talked about two nights, um, but I scaffolds this, so we would, we would, we could finish tonight, because what I want to end tonight with is a, is a, is a gallery walk. These are all, by the way, best practices, if anybody's been noticing, as a matter of fact, Christine Sanson goes, wow, I can see you being a junior high teacher, I can totally see this. Um, a gallery walk is a means of prior, is looking at each other's work, and remember, did you watch that whole thing, our work didn't have to be perfect tonight, did it? The power is in the conversation, since I'm an atomic gun, it's badly changing. Um, so a gallery walk is, is giving you an opportunity to prioritize our done, we're not worried about, right, cause it's done. Proud of all of us, we would do a round of applause, but that's gonna take more time. But we're worried now about our, our doing and our to do list, and our to do list does not have to be finished, it doesn't have to be perfect. But we generated some ideas tonight, right? The folks that can get those things done are gonna be the administrative team, our teachers, our faculty, our custodians, maybe some consultants. But we need to resonate with the people in this room, most importantly, our board of education members, who we'll bring this back to. But how do we do that? Everybody's gonna get twenty dots, you're gonna do a gallery walk, because this table may have thought of something we didn't think about.
Is this now or tomorrow?
Right now.
We, we, we don't feel like we've had nearly enough time to really get feedback from everybody to get the ideas on here in the first place?
It's, it won't, it won't, it's none of, none of it's perfect.
I thought you were all nuanced over there. No, we're reflective and deliberate, my dear.
Oh. So, anyway, it will not be perfect, but this is a gallery walk, this is an exiting from the room. But you're gonna do this secretly and individually, you are not. Suzlama taking to do any bartering with Michael Guinan, to say, I want you to take your twenty stickers and my twenty stickers, and put them all on, moving to eight P M, eight A M star time.
And it has a smiley face on it.
I bet it does. So, I know that most of these look similar, they're not, many of you said things that were done or doing or to do, so I need you to be very, doing a very, what they call, close read on these, before you leave tonight. You're each only getting your twenty stickers, you can use your twenty stickers for all on one item, because it's so darn important to you. And then, the, we as administrators are gonna go, wow, that got a lot of stickers. That's really important to somebody, that's why you cannot coerce your neighbors. These, and as Chris said, these are not done by any means, but we will bring these back, and we will, we will have time again for this. Some of these are also gonna turn out to be building level, some of these are going to be district level, right? So, we, we'll have to sort those out as well, this is not a perfect process.
We didn't get to spend.
And we need.
Yeah. They only get one. But wait, wait. I agree. There's more to do, because we are not coming back tomorrow night, I'm going to give you ten more minutes on the clock. We're gonna have to do this, ten more minutes on the clock, no bartering, I saw that. I saw that, ten more minutes.
But don't touch it.
They don't.
I'm the middle side.
Scott, is there anything that you wanna add here?
Did you do David again, your old name?
Yeah, career.
Career. Bye, honey, I love you. I, I have a question, guys, before we go ahead, I'm a little bit confused by this process. Could I say something? For those of us who are new here, which is not an instinct of mine, but we haven't had the time to do any of this, and you were saying, go just it. And one, one of the things that I noticed, um, something, case, that is very important to me, a lot of us who live here feel that this district is too small, and that it should be combined. Other districts, or it should be more collaboration, or this, and that, is that a goal in this district?
No, but you don't.
Is it, is it, is it there?
No.
Is it a goal, is it a goal, where is it?
Yeah, but sure, this is different than being too small.
No, 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 but the idea of, of trying to combine more with other districts.
I mean.
Collaborating.
No, no, more than collaborating, you know, in your state, it's trying to merge districts, because they're too small, they're not efficient, and there was supposed to be a study of this, that never happened, right? Right, is that, is that, has it ever been a.
No, people always bring it up.
Merging, you know, and I think collaboration is a subset of that.
I was just. Gallery walk.
Right, right, but it's also a bigger.
Can I see these, if you're done, can you hang these out in the hallway, please?
So, what are the stickers, meaning?
Voting for ideas.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the, just any color?
Any color, you can put them all on one, or.
It might be, it was kind of in this.
Oh, my God, that's one of ours. Why didn't you break it down?
Sort of as. Focusing on diversity. School.
It was, it's, it's concrete.
There's one that's missing, there's one that's missing.
Um, we had a really good.
We do something about emotional. Yes, it's on, it's on. I mean, you're.
Is drugs in there, that's in the wellness thing?
Yeah.
Number is pretty good.
Does it really?
Great life, think alike, I guess.
Are we just putting on the new ones, or?
Well, yeah.
Are we just putting on the new ones, or over person?
Every, you gotta walk around and put dots wherever you want a dot. So, I'm gonna put a dot for all of ours, because I need to see where.
Me too, so, girl.
And then I will do my remaining dot.
You know, being a left, it's my hands will now have this.
Oh, my God, that's so great when you're, I mean, they, they have so many. My dad's left.
I think they say, my mom's left, she said, you know, I don't know the.
My dad's left.
I think, I think this is a child, I think not.
Oh, I won't.
I don't know.
Just stick it by. Someone else.
Get ten, it's twenty stickers.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have any.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna grab a transportation. That's separate. I'm gonna make a song, thanks.
Somebody goes, it's done away, just so.
We're not supposed to put dots where the to do's, right, or doing? I don't think anyone on our table knew that, so they.
It's something like.
Eric.
Draw a dot.
So.
Actually, no, special.
To provide anything. Red to you.
Or no, and, and there's something. Okay, are you on these on any more? My husband's. Yeah, it's my teenage year. Yeah, yeah, he mentioned it last week, that he might join, he's like, I always. So, thank you for.
The dots.
What does that mean? But anyhow, so I'm smiling. I'm tired. I haven't worked this hard. You were on this, what is the U cabinet position's name?
I'm sorry, if you vote for student-led cafeteria redesign.
It's all about marketing.
Before I vote, I'm truly opposed to this. But a very, very positive, so I wanna make sure that I'm not getting conned. I don't wanna get conned. Three in a row.
Very honest and transparent.
You guys are alike.
What? We think alike. No, we talk all this time.
You finish each other then to this. Something wrong with that?
No, we just work very closely, right? We understand each other. I have to say, the majority of our staff will tell you that our middle school staff had things like this, right? Yeah, would agree with that. They would all. It's a good department to work in, I would say. Now, this is how people are supposed to do it. This is how people are supposed to be doing it.
Never in the summer. Winter is the bye-bye time.
Maybe not an understanding of the. Actually, we do. In the past, we contracted.
I'm Sarah, Sarah.
Alright, I think that we are wrapping up.
On our agenda for tonight. Um, I did want to give an opportunity. For public input two. For those of you who still have some dots, we'll leave the posters up for a few more minutes after the meeting has closed. But at this time, um, the last part of the agenda is public input two. So is there anybody that would like to speak for public input two?
I think we should have a transportation committee. That's my recommendation.
Oh, we didn't put that on the. Yeah, we didn't, here I'm adding it.
That's, but that's not an objective. That, is that, I don't think that's objective.
Well, we have it, so I'll throw a dot on it. I've got four more. Really, right here, right here, right. It kinda goes right there. And combine two streets. It's absolutely ridiculous what's going on. There's the distance from here to that, to the end of the library and the bus stops there for a street and then stops at the next. Those parents could get together and use one or the other. I'm serious. It's nonsense.
Can we?
It's pollution on top of.
From the board, um, that, I think that our administrators can take this from here. I'm doing this.
Hang on, let, let's finish public input two. Anybody else for public input two? Anybody else? Alright, so, um, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we cancel tomorrow night's meeting.
Second.
Second, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, um, thank you very much and thank you for coming. Those of you who still have dots, feel free to continue to, uh, put them where you need and they have them. We'll take it from here now.
Thank you so much, everyone.